All right. The hour of six o'clock having arrived, we're going to call a regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Village President Clappold?
Here. Six or seven members of the Village Board present. Forum being established, we're going to proceed with the Order of Business Asset orders on the agenda. For the record, today is Tuesday, July 7th of 2020. We are at Village Hall at 401 St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is 6:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of Sherman Village Board trustees. On the agenda, this has been posted 48 hours in advance of the meeting, so we're going to move along. My trustee sidekick Ivy Howard, who's in charge of Sherman for now, tonight. So you go by Mayor Ivy and then Mayor Howard. What do you want? She's all confused. Mayor Ivy? So Mayor Ivy is going to ask everybody to stand and face the flag. And she is going to start us off from the Pledge of Allegiance. So you're going to start us and everyone's going to join in. We're going to start when you start, okay?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Very good. All right. Do you want to hang out up here or do you want to be the engineer tonight? Sure. I'm going to turn you on a lot of issues, okay? There's things that need fixed around town.
We've got streets.
Okay, so we're moving along. We need to set the agenda. As stated, it was posted in advance of the meeting, so there's no action items to be added to the agenda. Any trustees seeking recognition for discussion purposes only?
I just wanted to talk about proposed fees for the parks.
Okay. So we have proposed fees. Trustee Hahn, anybody else? The Chair entertaining motion to set the agenda. Trustee Rockford makes a motion, they're seconded, seconded by trustee Gray. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post. The ayes have it. The agenda is set. Item number one in the clerk's report is the presentation of the June 2nd, 2020 minutes. Those are presented by the clerk. Any trustees have any questions, discussions, corrections? They seem none, we need to approve the June 2nd, 2020 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Schultz makes a motion, they're seconded, seconded by trustee Gray. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
And trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no, the minutes are adopted as presented and will be added to Village website for our citizens to view. Item number two is the semi-annual review of the executive session minutes. We cannot discuss these in an open session. This is a, pretty much just a technical thing that we need to do in terms of the executive session minutes. So trustees entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes. Motion to that effect, trustee Hahn makes a motion, seconded by trustee Long. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The executive session minutes are adopted. Item number three is the presentation of bills for approval. Those bills are in your board member packets. They've been emailed to each of you prior to the meeting. Are any trustees seeking more information regarding any of the bills that need to be paid? Pretty much day-to-day operations. Okay, so now we get a motion to pay the bills, there's a motion to that effect. Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by trustee Schultz. Sorry, trustee Tim. Trustee Schultz seconds the motion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, the bills are approved. The treasurer's report, there is no treasurer's report?
Yes, there is.
There is, okay. Sorry, there is. So the treasurer's report has been emailed to you as well. We need to adopt the treasurer's report. Anybody have any discussion regarding the treasurer's report? There it is. Treasurer's notebook is not here. It's tax time, so he's pretty busy at work.
Just one comment. I had, well, actually, my wish out of my behalf, I can tell you about sales tax. We had not received April's. Speed's a little slower than normal. But we did get March and it was right at $40,000, which was sort of what we expected. April will be the month to tell if COVID is going to adversely affect the village or not and how bad. And we hope to have that, or he hopes to have that yet this week. But otherwise, we're still through March, we're still above budget. I think the correct term is excess revenues over expense year to date, so.
Any further discussion, comments, anybody? Okay, trustee Schultz made a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Trustee Hahn seconds that motion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Okay, that's six members voting yes, none voting no. The treasurer's report is approved, will be added to the Village website. Next item is the Village Engineers' report. So we have Mayor Ivy that's going to tell us all about the projects in the village of Sherman. What has your firm been fixing or what have you been working on? What does Sherman need, look at her?
What do you want?
What do we need?
What's the engineers' memory? Whatever you want.
What does Sherman, what would you want Sherman in Sherman? New business, bounce houses, what, anything? That's what that, yeah, it's like that. No, you might be alone. All right, I'll move to the legal report. Village Administrator, Economic Development, or Mayor. Moving along in the agenda, brings us to the President's report. Item number one is the Central State Fireworks Contract for July 4th of 2020. Fireworks spectacular, as is stated on the agenda. So I actually did a phone call, called each and every one of the trustees. I talked to them about fireworks. Brian was out of town and I went to message, just to get him a call back. But anyway, so this sounds kind of funny, ever approving the contract after the fireworks have gone off and blown up. Very much you can do right now. But this was approved prior to the board meeting by a one-on-one call with each of the trustees. So the fireworks, because we canceled the meeting, the second meeting in June, varied my agenda. So anyway, we canceled that meeting. So we need to just approve the Central State Fireworks Contract in the amount of, do you have that information for me? In the amount of $12,000?
It's in effect.
So I want to prove that first. Is there a motion to approve the fireworks contract? Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by trustee Tim. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
And trustee Tim?
Yes.
And all asked to be recorded as voting on the prevailing side. So that's seven members voting yes, none voting no. The fireworks contract with Central States is approved. I do want to read into the record and let our constituents and citizens and anybody else know that this was one of the most successful years for our fireworks contract in terms of donations, the best ever. So I'm going to read off our sponsors. I want to acknowledge them. We also had individual signs printed for them, put out around the perimeter of the park so that they could receive recognition regarding them stepping up and contributing to our fireworks show. This fireworks show was actually broadcast nationally. It was one of about six or seven. CNN had come out and they had a live feed on our fireworks show. So it was going to be a 25-minute show. It seemed like it was maybe a little bit slower because we stretched it another five minutes to get to the top of the 10 o'clock news hour because it was on the statewide network, pretty much national for even the other nationally syndicated news outlets to potentially pick up and do a teaser as they broke into their news broadcast or even WICS and the local affiliates of all the different news stations. So it literally was on CNN along with, they wanted to do Small Town America and they wanted to do a few other larger cities. But most cities, towns, villages did not have fireworks. So they featured us, they featured, I think, Washington DC. They featured the Marina, the Rock the Dock. They featured Houston and Atlanta and a few others. So anyway, it was a decision made on the spot to kind of extend it out to that 10 o'clock news hour, that 10 o'clock news hour. But Green Dodge Kia Subaru, they contributed $1,000 for the show. Levi Ray &amp; Shoe contributed $1,000 for the show. Fancy Creek Township, $1,000. Williamsville State Bank, $1,000. United Community Bank, $1,000. Central State Fireworks discounted the show because we had jumped it up, actually, $1,000. Noon and Grand Rental, $500. Prairie Haven Animal Center, $500. Neiman Foods, which is County Market, $500. The Villas Senior Care Facility, $500. Hickory River Smokehouse, Ryan Lewis, a local individual who owns that, $200. Williams Township, $200. Cascom, $100. Then we got a bunch of in-kind contributions. So Robert Chickfritz, the Coors Miller Lite Distributorship, they gave us at least $1,000 in in-kind radio ads. So it was actually playing on the radio for a period of time before the show. Larry Sap, we would estimate that at least $1,000 in terms of allowing us to use all of that 21.34 acres of ground that is south of the Village Park. Carter Brothers Lumber, essentially Ed Carter. Ed Carter mowed all of the fields down for us. So we estimate, you know, if you had manpower and equipment and everything to bale all that, mow that down and bail that up and remove that out of there, Ed at least gave us, you know, say $1,000. So thanks to Ed. The Rail, Bill Smith, who owns the Rail, but also Jim and Mary Johnson. They were right there to step up when we looked to a place to shoot these fireworks. So at least $1,000 to, you know, use an entire golf course to shoot your fireworks. So pledges for the event, what do you got? Basically $12,500 total in-kind was $4,000 and the total cash was $8,500. The original contract was $13,000, but like I said, Central States gave us $1,000 back. So the net cost to the village was essentially $500 and that's never been done before. I did want to point out that we used larger shells this time because we were moving it and had larger diameters to shoot the shells and to get them higher in the air. So we went from a five-inch shell, so that basically the rule of thumb is for every one-inch shell that you have, it goes up 100 feet. So when we shoot them in Walder Park, they go about 500 feet in the air. When you shoot them here, they were six-inch shells, so they go 600 feet in the air. It was a very, very good reception for having them there. The amount of emails, phone calls, text messages, I'm getting like just tons and lots of good comments regarding having it there and other people being able to see it. But there's one thing that we also have to focus on is the fact that there still is a virus in here as some individuals have, you know, masks on. That was contributing, not a contribute, it was one of the main factors in this because Walder Park gets so densely packed and we did not need any kind of negative news coverage, images coming out of there, things along those lines. You remember what happened to the Ozarks Bar and Grill, the Backwater Jacks? It killed business for the entire next, the two weeks following that was just decimated because of the people packed in the pools and things along those lines. So we have to take those things into consideration and you factor in CNN being in there and all the different things. And the other thing is, is there's one entrance, one exit out of the area there. So it's a safety concern when you're packing that many people in there. When we did it up here for this year, it cleared out in 30 minutes. Top to bottom, Chief came over and said, we just got everybody out of here. 30 minutes, this thing was, you know, seamless in some respects. Our cops were, you know, very proficient in moving individuals around, getting them out there. The infrastructure was already there. So it went very well. I actually took a drive before the show. Tons of people along Old Tipton School Road, tons of people out in Old Tipton Estates, everywhere, up and down Meredith Drive and so the boulevards. So it worked out very well. But that being said, I just wanted to, you know, kind of bring everybody up to speed on that. I know Ms. Walton, you know, you film this and some people watch your video, so I get to communicate to a larger audience in that respect. So I wanted to get that information out there. So anybody have any questions regarding it? Thoughts, concerns, statements, nothing? Okay. So we already fast forward.
Yeah, I think, yeah. You're good.
That's going to move us to the committee and department reports. There's no committee and department reports. Chief Banger, anything to report from the police department?
Yeah, I'd like to go for just a second to share with everybody that the fireworks thing was a new thing for us and we had to make some amends on the scene there to try to do some things to make sure everything got covered. But all in all, it went very well. I think our count was that we believe that we parked about 1,000 vehicles, nine, three lots that we could go. And our count down at Walder Park is usually about 600, 650, you know, maybe 650 at the most down there that we could pack in a lot. So anyway, yeah, a lot more cars. So anyway, that was fireworks. And then Jennifer Sellers from the local state department office came by today and delivered, or yesterday, delivered a $500 donation to the police department. I want to share that with everybody and we appreciate that. I wanted to share that with everybody. And Sunday was JT Trastee's last shift with the department and he's coming tomorrow with a kind of end year and he'll be starting a new career, so I want to share it. We wish him well. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Banger? Well, I just want to say thank you for, have you echoed our sentiments about getting everything put together for the fireworks display. It's all hands on deck to do this fireworks display. So we literally prepared to bring every single police officer in and they went this much. So thanks to you and your staff. Thank you, Mr. Moez, and the other individuals that put together the Incident Action Plan, the IAP. There's a lot of planning that goes into this stuff prior to any of these events that happen. These reports are sent off to stick. I mean, there's a lot of different agencies that know about what's happening and where things are planned to be at. So these things, literally, there's a lot of thought that goes into this and these packets are about this big and it's called the Incident Action Plan. We have forethought in terms of an LZ, you got to think about that. If we have a helicopter, you know, somebody gets injured, where is the liflight chopper going to land? These guys plan for that. Designated protest area in this day and age, in this climate, we didn't know, you know, if potentially somebody wanted to come out and so we had to pick a spot to stick those individuals. But it's all kinds of different stuff like this, the COVID restrictions or recommendations, the social distancing. You know, when you're parking the vehicles and the officers are communicating with individuals. So there's a lot of stuff that goes into this. So thank you to your staff, thanks to Public Works in terms of everything that they did, putting up the, you know, the strainers, mowing it, keeping the ground, the perimeters, the parking areas. There was a lot of paint that was painted out there so that we would move a lot more efficient and effectively as we pulled cars in. There was a painted line, park, 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 you know, things like that. So thank you to everybody that made it very successful and had a hand in doing so. So thanks, Jennifer. You got Director Mike Moez, Emergency Management, anything to kind of report on?
I think you did my report, so. The only thing I would like to highlight beyond the 30-page Incident Action Plan, like you said, we do cover a lot of things, is that this morning we had an after-action meeting with the fire district, the police department. I was able to talk to Bruce today a little bit and we put together some recommendations because like Craig said, this is the first time at this venue. There are some things that we could do better, other things weren't great. So we already submitted that to the mayor and Mike to review and I fully expect next year, I'll let you figure it out, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Moez? We bring, brings us to the Sherman Public Works Department. I have sad news to report, if you have not heard that, but Director Sean Newton, his father passed away at about 1:40 in the morning last night. He's obviously off. His dad was diagnosed with cancer and had a short timeframe for, you know, the survivability of it. But he's in a better, more peaceful place, I think, and that's kind of what they've communicated to me, just on how fast the progression lies. But I want to keep them and our thoughts and prayers. Sean does a lot for this community. I mean, it's just, it's insurmountable what he does. And Bill Newton was as solid as they get. I mean, just true blue, good-to-the-core character, great guy, funny guy. Can't say enough great things about him, but he's with his wife, got them out. And so keep Sean in your, you know, if you see him, express your condolences and just keep in mind that he's like, you know, going through a tough time right now. It's going to bring us to, well, I'm sorry, Bruce Beal. He's our number two in charge of all the works. Make a report? No, I'm good. All right. New business. So under new business, I want to come to trustee Hahn and discuss kind of park reservation fees and athletic field fees. I don't want to discuss it in terms of like a deadline agenda. Mr. Hahn has asked for the opportunity to talk.
No, I just, I've received a few phone calls that we're going to start implementing fees on the fields around for some of our kids playing softball down there and also I heard the pavilion would be rented and different things. I guess I just wanted to know what the costs are, how we came up with them and just what the fees are going to be.
You got the fees? So I get the fees too, but, and they're posted, where are they posted? You give them to everybody, right? I mean, the people that have asked for reservations and stuff. So where's your stuff at?
So much paper.
You just give it to me. If you were to use a gazebo at Village Park, it would be $40, a four-hour max on that for a resident. Non-residents would be $60. Small picnic shelter at Village Park would be $35, four-hour max, $60 for a non-resident. I'm sorry, can I say the first member, that's for a resident. A large picnic shelter at the park, new park, would be $35, non-resident $75. And that's, could be split in half because it is so big. We're going to have, and we have had requests for like family reunions and various different things along those lines for the use of that facility. Walking and running, or walks and runs, like if you were to just have a walk or a run, you'd contact Village Hall. And if we discover that special events, that would be, you know, contact Village Hall. Wedding ceremony for the use of the amphitheater would be $300 an hour, $500 for a non-resident. We've had some interest in individuals wanting to use that. The problem that we're going to run in on that is, is the fact that we have sometimes a summer concert series planned and the city and lighting guys have to come in at what noon, essentially to start rigging lights to start, you know, setting up for the sound and stuff like that. So that's, I don't see that being a huge use of that when we have, when we're kicking off a lot of these summer concert series. This year we had 19 shows planned that we're going to try and get in, but with the COVID-19 situation, we can't even get a liquor license from the governor's office issued to us, even though we issue liquor licenses. For a liquor license, you have to have one from the state and one from the local government. So the executive branch will not obviously issue us a liquor license, so no concerts. We can't legally sell alcohol. Walder Park has a covered pavilion. If you wanted to use that, it'd be $30 as a resident, max of four hours, $70 for a non-resident. If you wanted to use the sports fields, have exclusive use, this is for exclusive use of these fields. And the own schedule, that's your time booked out. The sports field would be $8 for a, for a resident, $11 for a non-resident.
Not per hour?
Yes. League play would be contact the Village Hall. Walter Park concessions.
Check your inboxes.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Batting cages, so we have two batting cages there. We've put up a lot of batting cages in the last several years. Over Crown Point Series, one or two? There's two at the Athletic Club, there's two down at the Walder Park facility. So to use the batting cages would be $10 for a resident, $25, one hour minimum, basically using it for hour, for a non-resident. Crown Point, same thing, $10 and $25. Sherman Elementary School, $10, $25. Village-wide block party, so the village goes out. We have administrative costs associated with that, obviously, to take barricades over. Police department is involved in the block parties, having that on the schedules and part of their process. $75 for like a block party association and that's pretty much it.
Do you have any other question? The batting cages are usually, you know, we'll see if there's other dad visions or whatever, because they're going to be signed or something that are going to be posted there letting people know that they just can't access these.
Well, you could, so here's the thing, this is where it's a lot of confusion, confusion. Our park facilities right now, you can go to and use, just like yours. If you want to go in the fairgrounds, you can go in the fairgrounds. You want to go to wherever. But if you want to have exclusive use and be booked out at that specific time and that's yours for that specific timeframe, then there's to be associated with that. And.
And then we'll post that and say in the.
Exactly. So there's a lot of administrative work that goes along with this, right? So if you're going to be taking reservations and not having the, we have a lot of conflict with, you know, use of the fields. And plus, we have a lot of costs for having parks. We have to mow these facilities. We have to weed these facilities. We have to fix these facilities. When toilets break, sinks break, we fill them and stock them with paper, toilet paper, you know, hand drying paper. Well, we actually just put in hand dryers, the automatic ones. People break, those things break. Mulch at the parks, you know, like at Walder Park. The more people that use it, the more kids that are down there, that gets kicked out. It just degrade, it erodes over a period of time. We just purchased two new mowers because we got to stay on top of the mowing. We got gas, we got headcount, we've got, you know, the cost of the equipment. One Toro motor mower is a diesel one, that large, that big, $22,000. Another Toro mower, $17,000. So bringing in the ball diamond mix for these facilities costs thousands of dollars because it's a special ball diamond mix. The CA6 for Walder Park has a cost. And so most places capture some kind of a fee, especially if you're having exclusive use of it. So we have to start this. I wish this was implemented. It should have been implemented long before I've ever even said this, and this year. It just makes sense that you have to offset your costs. You're going to continue to provide the services that are associated with that. So we've talked about implementing this a little bit over the many years. And with the parks being shut down due to COVID and things along those lines, and then the reopening was a perfect time to kind of start, as we were getting contacted about reopening the parks and use of the facilities and things along those lines, talking with those individuals. So I have one individual who had talked to me about the use of the pavilion and she looked at our fees and it's ultimately like $110 cheaper than if you went into Springfield and got that pavilion in there. But she had said, you know, I was going to give a $250 donation. I'm like, what? It's very noble, but I've been sitting here for about 13 years, I think it is now, and I don't think I've ever ran into somebody. I've ever ran into somebody that has wanted to just donate two-hundred-and-fifty or even fifty dollars to our parks. I've never seen it happen. But the cost of the parks, the cost of everything is going up, and other revenue sources are going down. Sales tax has been holding a little bit, but we just got the estimates from the Illinois Municipal League. We're going to take a, so we have two large line items. The Village of Sherman does not get very much money at all from property taxes. I mean, literally, next to nothing. So like in terms of, you know, trying to capture some revenues and stuff, when you look at what's on the horizon, and we're going to be passing a budget next, in the next two weeks, it looks like this for the income tax. So we got sales taxes and income taxes. Income tax line item source is our largest, our second-largest source. The rate for that is going to drop from a hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents per individual. So when we talk about like, how important it is to be counted in the census, or anybody that you know that hasn't been counted, get them counted. The village gets per capita reimbursement rates. So we have four thousand one hundred and forty-eight individuals in our town. A hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents is what we were reimbursed per individual at that amount last year. So it brought in four hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and one dollars. Due to COVID, unemployment going up, because this is local government distributive fund dollars, so when we have the local government distributive funds, these income tax dollars here, it's all tied to people that are working. When unemployment goes up, that total aggregate amount goes down. So the forecast has been revised and dropped to ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents per individual. That is going to be a forty-six thousand dollar, forty-six thousand one dollar and thirty-six hit to our budget for next year. That's a ten, just in that line item source alone, that's a ten point two-three percent decrease. The motor fuel tax is another source that we rely heavily on. That rate is going from twenty-four ninety-four per person in Sherman to twenty dollars for a nineteen point eight percent decrease. We're going to go from a hundred and, taking in a hundred and three thousand dollars, a hundred and three thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twelve cents, and that line item down to eighty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, which is going to be a twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollar loss. Just those two sources alone. We're going to have to formulate a budget for next year, and we've got to pass it by July thirty-first, knowing that we have a sixty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollar and forty-four cents fall off in those two revenue sources alone. Not including the sales tax and what's going on with that. So in terms of the cost and everything that's going on with the village and, you know, addressing various different fees, that's kind of the baseline. That's the reasoning. That's the logic. That's why we are where we're at. And it's for the exclusive use. You can still use your parks all you want. But if you're going to bring in a tournament, bring in people, and do all those various different things, and it's dedicated to you, our guys get that cleaned up. Pavilions, I mean, we have summer out. We bring on staff. They go out with power washers. There's a lot of birds that make mess and various different things along those lines, and that stuff all has to be addressed. So in terms of the fees, yes, that's, I mean, I just want, I want to give kind of some background.
Sure, I got you.
Because we got new people in here, so.
No problem. And I got no problem with pavilions. I can understand some of that. I guess I'm just not seeing the sports fields, and I'm not seeing the batting cages. I just don't see how we can charge that to our local people that are here. Like you said, it's, it's just nice. We've always had that. I just don't see the cost, especially with batting cages. Is there any, what cost is there in those batting cages?
Tons of cost.
Well, one thing I got to say about batting cages, an individual donated a lot of time and cost for the concrete, you know, for the kids. He did it for the kids. Now we're going to charge the kids. I mean, I don't agree with that either. How much money are we thinking we're going to make? Did you estimate how much we're going to make just for charging?
Yeah, we took a look at two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Took a look at two thousand and nineteen reservations. If we applied this standard in two thousand and nineteen, we would have brought in about ten thousand dollars of additional revenue to offset expenses.
So why can't we find another source to cut something else?
What do you want to cut?
Well, we just watched and discussed that. But I just, for the kids, I got a real problem with that one. Like you said, I can understand pavilions. I understand there's lots of cost there. There's birds and this and that, sure.
So we got to have this discussion now. This is healthy. This is very good. What kind of costs are with the fields?
Well, I have contacted the organization and brought them in and said, hey, here's our cost. What can we do? And maybe they can offset something. We sit down with them.
We can, we can shift.
That's what I said. Like, from what I gathered, some of them didn't even know it's coming. So like you said, we sit down with the head of the organization there.
Well, all the people who were permitting for this year, who were permitting in the prior years, were notified by me specifically via email. I can show you the emails if you like. Noting that, hey, just to let you know, we are looking at these reservation charters. I'm not sure when they're going to take effect, but they're likely to take effect.
So I want, this is, I mean, you got to think about this. To bring in that ball-diamond mix.
Talking about dirt, not ball-diamond mix.
The ball-diamond mix, the dirt?
Yeah, the dirt.
That's the ground-up, real fine dirt. To those fields at Walter Park, that's two thou, at least two thousand dollars.
Check your faders.
It's not. We've called on that. It's three dollars per truckload, three truckloads.
It run, last building for that was, was three truckloads. I think it was about three and a half or four truckloads. It's about a little over a thousand dollars.
Not two thousand.
Not two thousand.
Two thousand, the way it was reported was that.
The other thing, the numbers you got for two thousand and nineteen, can we see how you arrived with that ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
That'd be very interesting.
But, so what's.
You're going to kill Sherman softball.
Hold on, this is, this is. This is, it's worth.
The kids.
So what are the costs associated with it? We have to bring in the ball-diamond mix, whether it's twelve hundred bucks or two thousand. Okay, twelve. I'll just cede that point. Twelve hundred bucks. The bathrooms, I mean, this stuff just gets all, everything gets used. But the mowers and the public works individuals that are out there, the weed eaters, the gas, all of that stuff. But I want to go back to the batting cages real fast. So what happens with batting cages? How much, you know, how much are those nets?
Oh, the nets, yeah.
How many, we've already replaced nets, right?
I agree.
I mean, seriously, how much is a net?
About eight hundred bucks.
Eight hundred dollars for those nets. I drove past one the other day, and I know that these are a lot of Springfield teams that are coming out here, or there's a mix in with these individuals. There is literally an individual with his father doing a wind-up and throwing the ball like you're in the outfield directly into the net. That's going to wear that net out. There's going to be a hole in that. The astroturf that goes down on that, on the, in those batting cages, I know, you've already told me, you came forward in the budget years past and said, I need, we need more astroturf on those concrete pads. How much are those things? That astroturf is expensive, right?
Well, I think it was, it was a glue down, wasn't it? Or was it?
Yeah, I can't, I don't remember the cost. It's glue down.
Yeah, it's a glue down.
But the glue down carpeting, whatever, whatever you want, whatever it's referred to, that has a very large cost. And if we don't, if we don't recoup some costs, then things are going to go by wayside. We don't get a lot of tax revenue in this village. We don't get a lot of tax revenue in this village, especially on a property tax bill. We're, for our operations, we're less than one percent of a tax bill, right at one percent, less than one percent. If you add in the bond that we did for Rhodes a couple of years ago, three years ago, whatever it was, we're about two and a half percent to maybe two point six percent of that tax bill. And I mean, actually, this is what, here's what it looks like. There's where the line goes. And we're the third lowest line item.
I think like what he said is, we need to get together and, I think, discuss it.
Yeah, I get it. Like you said, I'd like to see too, just how we arrived at these that ten thousand seems like an extreme number for just the ball field, right?
Whoa, that's not the ball fields. I was asked the question of how much money would be brought in if we would apply.
Okay, I'm talking about the ball field.
No, I thought I said.
Ten thousand is the amount.
That's all we pay.
For all reservations for all of the amendments.
Okay, I get that, because the other fees on the pavilions and that, last thing, ten thousand, right? See that for the ball, what are we talking about, the ball field?
Oh, my gosh. A good example is, one of the, one of the teams actually paid today, paid for batting cages, and paid for reservation fees, the storm owing, I think, Walters, two hundred and thirty-four dollars for their season. And they're done.
So here, yeah, and let's just.
So it could be anywhere from, if it's not a tournament day, tournaments, of course, are longer days. They take up the entire park. It could take up a whole park. There's a lot more companies they use. The cost could be greater. What that would be, depending on the.
If you.
But we're probably looking at, I don't know, sixteen dollars a day typically is what one field uses.
If you use the field for two hundred, and it costs.
It'd be three hundred dollars.
For one month, if you use the field, you know, you have one practice a week, and it was sixteen dollars. Say you use it for two hours. Sixteen dollars times four is what? Sixty-four? Right? So here's where I'm getting at. And you have ten kids on that baseball team. At the start of the season, you would capture another six dollars and forty cents from each parent. So we try and keep the fees super low. Let's spread it out over four people so that, and it's manageable. Our fees are lower than, I mean, Williamsville just implemented this. And I'm not throwing, I do want to, I love Williamsville, and I talked to Mayor Gilkey about this, but their fees are forty-five dollars versus our sixteen. And if you want them to drag the field, it's sixty dollars. This isn't something new to Sherman. I mean, I'm saying, we should have been doing this a long time ago. The Athletic Club has costs. They're charging for the use of their fields. It's worked in, my kid plays at the gym as part of the facility fee. Our parents travel to, I can't tell you how many people like travel out of state.
This isn't travel. This is just little youth organizations.
But we travel. I go to the gym, and I, they have to pay.
Private we run.
But it's the same thing. It has costs associated with it. There's head count. There's utilities. I mean, that's, these are all the other things that you got to think about.
We figure out how much.
We got to pay.
Ball lines are a cost. I mean, we were getting in for a year, and what number did you say? Two thousand, three thousand, four, four thousand?
Who figured?
So that's your length of service of all fields?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I don't have a problem with pavilions. That's fine. I can live with some of that. And I understand there's fees and that, and picking up trash and doing things. I just, like you said, the Sherman-Woynesville softball, baseball, these towns have grown up on sports. This is what we're known for on different things. I sure don't want to discourage some people over miniscule fees. And I agree, they're small fees, but they're still fees.
Do you think that that's going to stop a parent for another six dollars and forty cents?
I don't know.
Well, I think, I think that what, I mean, I think as a board, we should just sit down and go over the fees and determine how much money we can get from it or not. It's even feasible to charge. If it's, you know, I just.
I mean, there's some, there is a lot of tough decisions coming for this board very quickly. Engineer Ivy, Mayor Ivy, I'm going to report this because I actually forgot to say it. Everybody start thinking about this one. The bike trail, Sherman-Woynesville Bike Trail, if you want that, you're going to have to be prepared to vote for putting a tax increase on the citizens of Village Hall. The bike trail funds that are coming in from the state through the form of a grant are capped at two million dollars. The bid letting was just open last Monday-ish. It's going to be right to three million. So Sherman and Williamsville, both of us are going to have to come up with another five hundred thousand dollars in terms of our portion of funding that bike trail, should we move forward on that.
So I just think that we should probably all just.
Yeah, so, and we've posted, we're posting the budget meeting. We got a budget meeting coming up before the next meeting. Getting the budget document out there. We're working with media to get the posting notice done. But like I said, there's going to be significant falls in our revenues. And you're going to have to think about layoffs, furloughs. There ain't, there's, if you cut in this town, you're cutting staff. That's where our money goes. And we don't have enough staff as it is. So that's the reality of what's coming.
So we got to get together soon and talk about it?
Yeah.
Two days about the base.
Amen.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, before, you know, I mean, let's get something together that we can all agree on.
We can't, only two people can talk at a time in terms of not violating the Open Meetings Act. So.
We can have a special meeting.
Exactly. And we've been discussing that because, like I said, you know, we've got, we just got the Illinois Municipal League magazine just came out regarding, for July twenty-twenty, it's got the revised revenue estimates in it. So we're going to see all that stuff. And it's, it's French times regarding what we're going to do regarding the budget and where the revenue is coming from. So, any, any further discussion regarding that?
Brent, this will be just to have rest groups here too. No one was barred from being able to participate as a result of that.
I've never heard that.
I knew that it was going to get sensitive issues, right? Going through these things.
Oh, you got it.
Especially these brand new things, new patent hats. So I completely understand that I was, I was waiting back. Some people didn't have a season because of the COVID stuff. Some just said, oh, just go somewhere else. Never billed any money for it, only those ones that asked.
Okay. Any further business? Under New Business, seeing none. Move to Old Business, we're in older, older business. Do not have any civic organization for seeking recognition for one. So Public Comment, brings us to Public Comments. We have one, two. Jeff, you're a maybe. You want to speak?
I want to listen to everybody else say say first. They might say what's on my mind there.
So we have a number of individuals who've signed in. They want to speak. First individual who's signed in is Mr. Randy Burge. Randy, you know this, you're a little have on the public comment and things. So you please come forward to the podium. You do, as you know, it's like the fire department rules, we have a timeframe. It's been established in ordinance. So I got to set you at three minutes and give you the floor.
Thank you. Bananas, Rye bread, ground beef, but, no, I'm not in the town. Oh, you got the wrong notes here. I'm sorry. First of all, I read an email that all of you received regarding Springfield Park Board's annexation of properties within Springfield and West County. And I'll say at the top that I'm really opposed to this. I think Samuel Alden's comments and notes, emails, and research he's done is right on. And I wouldn't question any of that. Seems to me the taxes, at the rate that they explain, could be a hundred and fifty to six or eight hundred dollars per household insurance, depending on the personal value of your house. And I know I don't want to pay for taxes for services I don't receive, and probably will never receive. And I've been sent in at Park a couple of times at Will's baseball games years ago. But other than that, that's, I don't use Springfield Parks. It's interesting to note the conversation that you just had about parks and usage fees and everything. And I would suggest, or strongly suggest, one, that you do everything you can legally to fight the annexation of Sherman's properties. But two, look down the road to the future and consider a Spring, a Sherman Park District as an alternative. And good luck, designers and tax funds. Park Board will set the fees and be much lower than what Springfield Park Board is going to, going to take out of this. But that could be a discussion for the future. And legally, I don't know the timeframe for that, or what we could do to prevent Springfield Park Board becoming in here and annexing any more properties in the future. That's it. Thank you.
So you bring up a very good issue that's right in the heart of everything that's going on right now. So you guys want to hear kind of a little quick wrap-up of what, what, I mean? So I've talked to numerous Park Board trustees, started legal counsel a little bit about this. I've been getting and receiving phone calls from constituents. I am echoing the same sentiments that Mr. Burge just said to Park Board members. Talked to trustee Robin Schmidt, talked to trustee Grant Hammer, talked to trustee Lisa Badger, talked to trustee CJ Metcalf. And none of these conversations have been short. So I mean, there's been a lot of information that needs to be conveyed in here. I'm trying to get them to see and recognize that the nine properties that are in Sherman do not need to be included in this annexation. I've echoed what Mr. Burge just said, that. I've echoed what Mr. Burge just said, that we will be looking at avenues potentially on the legal side of things to, um, stop such annexations of those properties. One of the issues that we have is, is that there's about a third of Sherman that is actually situated in the Springfield Park District and it's always, it's been that, for a long time, if you remember back in two thousand eight, nine, ten, or it was, there was a, a movement afoot in Sherman to, uh, try and disconnect Sherman from the Springfield Park District, right? And our outside citizens group retained legal counsel, a very good municipal firm, Ansel Klink, Jeff Jurgens handled that with Mr. Brad Welker, he was kind of the head of that, he was the head of trying to do that. And then the village at that same time was a partner to that and we were, uh, working with Springfield Park District on, you know, some kind of, uh, uh, solution to, to such. Well, the citizens group, based on the information that they got from legal counsel at the time, that case law precedent, it would be very tough to disconnect, very costly, um, and the potential for success, you know, was just up in the air and they didn't have the funds essentially to move forward on that. So that issue kind of somewhat just went away on its own. Third, Sherman continues to pay into the Springfield Park District, uh, which would be like Old Tipton Estates.
Like a true.
Yeah, some properties along, uh, Stone Ridge, Brooksite Glen, Brett, trusty Honda's, Georgetown House. And at the time, it brought in about forty-two thousand to forty-five thousand dollars of revenues for that, based on those, those Sherman residents that were paying in. So they obviously, and that was another tough budget time, so they didn't want to give up those sources, that source of revenue. So they were in fact, too, for them as well, like I said, kind of just went away. But I've been talking with, uh, these Park Board members, I got Chris Tyland, I think he tried calling me back and I gotta talk to the Park Board President, this is Leslie Scrugg still, about this. Supposedly, there is a segment on this tomorrow morning on Sam Donia, uh, is what I was told, for like the two, two and a half hour segment in the morning and I thought somebody from the Park District was gonna be potentially on this show to talk about it. There's a committee meeting for them tomorrow night, Aaron's Pavilion, that I may or may not be attending based on if they even go forward with, um, having the meeting. And then the one meeting that everybody has seen in the newspaper is scheduled for, uh, July twenty-second at Aaron's Pavilion. What I would tell you and all of our constituents is, is that, and that, is that it's one thing for that other government body to hear from me as a, you know, a representative of our town, but there's no substitute, there is no substitute for an actual citizen calling these board members. And they've been telling me that it's already started and the word is getting out and they're getting calls and it's doing its job. So the more you lobby them, the more you echo those concerns, the better opportunity we have for, if they do go forward with their annexation, they got a thousand and twenty-two properties. They take off nine for Sherman because it has its own unique circumstances. I think they can back away from Sherman and still save face regarding the properties that they're trying to, uh, annex in this more closely associated with the city of Springfield and the individuals that would use those facilities. The fact that we're kind of continuing to grow our parks and, you know, our amenities are getting better and better and we're offering various different things to individuals, there's a great argument, and even the Park Board members know that like with Village Park, yeah, we know your people are using that facility, I mean, they see people walking on our path, they see our concerts and things along those, those lines. Those Park Board trustees have been great to talk to. I think that they're very open to looking at all the matters that are before them as well. But like I said, I cannot straight say this enough and take it back to everybody in the community, please don't leave it on, you know, myself and the trustees to essentially get this one knocked off. Make the phone calls yourself, you go to the Park Board's website, their contact information is right there, there's only one individual that only has her email, most of them list their cell phones, uh, leave them a message if they don't call, they have day jobs, Park Board does volunteer jobs, so they, you know, it's, they're not even paid anything for it. So just leave them a message, they're trying to call you back, like lobby them, work them, express that you have concerns, even if it doesn't affect you, about potentially the narrative being bigger of like, where does it go next? You know, and grab all of Sherman and things along those lines, because that's what's been being communicated to myself as well from, you know, the resident side I talk to. The here and now, right, what I'm working on is essentially, let's, I'm trying to get them to pull back on the nine properties, so. Was anybody that signed in, uh, wanting to talk about the Springfield Park District issue, I'm gonna kind of group the things if we can. No other Springfield Park District individuals that signed in to kind of talk about that issue? Okay, so let's move to the next person who's signed in, uh, Ms. Crandt?
Hi. I have a petition for start up St. John's Drive. Basically, we don't have sidewalks where we're at and I, we've got thirty-seven plus kids now in these neighborhoods and there are so many people coming. I mean, we've, I had some pretty close calls, um, I think Ben Monstock has reached out even a year tonight as well. So basically, we would like to get some stop signs and maybe speed limit reduction and now that Old Tipton has got those stop, stop signs up, we have even more traffic coming through on St. John's Drive because of us, they're cut through now. So not only where we haven't issues before, I've noticed it doubles. I'm active out there with my kids, a lot of the neighbors and their kids and it's, it's getting out of hand. I mean, people don't care. I got a lady in a van with her kids texting her cell phone, almost took, took out my family. Like, it was ridiculous. They don't care and it's unfortunate. So I have this, I, if you guys need any mouse from the neighborhood, I know I can get it, from St. John's Drive, like coming, you know, by Springfield Clinic, um, will pick up speed by the time they get past that first, you know, start up. So I would like two stop signs, I think, uh, the three total. And I know that seems like a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, we don't have sidewalks and, um, it's not wide roads there, people have to park on the side sometimes, so that's really all I wanna address and get something going for that to keep the kids a lot safer, so.
Okay. If you wanna turn that in.
Absolutely.
We'll formally accept it. Pay a part of the record and.
Thank you.
Continue to, to work with you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so next in, Lori Vandy, Ms. Vandy?
Yes, guys, thanks for.
You better put a timer on this.
Yeah, oh, three minutes, right? Thank you for giving me the chance to talk, I just wanted to come up and talk a little bit about the ball diamond usage. So I understand that there are fees associated, but I think saying things like mowing, it's a park, we'd be mowing it anyway, so I think that's hard to allocate that specific to softball. Uh, the diamond mix, that is specific to softball, no doubt. I called the place where we get the diamond mix from, their recommendation was one ton of truckload per field every other year. Each ton of truckload was three hundred and thirty-six dollars. So I think that those, now, if you don't go by the recommendation, you have what you've done in the past, maybe you've done more, maybe we're doing unnecessarily more. Uh, but I think it's something to look at, I think that might be a place to cut costs. When we're talking about teams that are traveling, traveling big, fundraisers, that is some teams, don't get me wrong, and that's a choice that people make. The team that I'm affiliated with and the team of the Sherman Area Softball League, we are low fees Sherman residents. The team that I'm affiliated with right now, we have eleven kids, seven of them are Sherman residents, we're having a tryout next, uh, the end of this month, we're trying for all twelve to be district residents. And so we charge a hundred and fifty dollars, that's a hundred and twenty dollars went to uniforms and insurance, the other thirty dollars went to tournament entry fees. For us to practice at that park at the given fees of twice a week, of the two-hour minimum per time, we would be just about nine hundred dollars to practice for all seven months. So yes, your point of sixty-four dollars a month, that's if you only practice for one month, we would be practicing for seven months. That would increase our fees seventy-five dollars per kid, which is essentially about fifty percent increase that we have to charge our kids in the community. Now, our kids are ten and under, they're not ready to travel, most of them on these big thousands of dollar team. We're trying to get them to love softball, we're trying to teach them skills, keep them local, we're playing the local community teams. We're not traveling to big, big St. Louis tournaments and stinking the night and things. In order for us to develop this community and bring some of our young kids up to move into better teams, we need to keep fees low, we need to be able to keep kids interested in softball. And I know that you mentioned that other areas do charge, but there are a lot that don't charge. Uh, Ripton doesn't charge, Petersburg doesn't charge, Athens doesn't charge, Pleasant Plains doesn't charge. Communities our size are finding a way to not charge for their field usage. I think that we could do that too. I just think there's a lot of misgivings about the, I think, I think you fill the diamonds, I think you fill the diamonds with not Sherman residents. I think we have the Springfield teams, and I've had one Sherman kid on our team, that are big budget teams, they'll come out here and use the diamonds. And so if that was what you think of the park and that's the goal of the park, to make some money for the village, then we're probably gonna be able to do it. I think that the true goal of the park is to be a community park and let our kids play without charging them too much that we can't afford to play there, then I think that that's, you know, that's what we would like to see, a lower fee for the park. I think, I think Rochester has a great fee structure, they charge some fees, I think it's five dollars per kid, one time a year, sixty bucks, we can afford that, there, there is a middle ground here somewhere. I wish that it would be loaded than what it is now. Thanks.
Okay. Next individual, Marsha Howard?
I, I'll, I'll put the field to, I'm reiterating a lot of the board's points, we're local. I was the former head of Sherman Area Softball and I get to her point, these large travel teams can't afford it. We're talking about five, six, seven, eight-year-olds who played at Waltrip Park, that was built by volunteers, you see the Joe Sturges, the Dave Seagulls, the Mark Gerges, they literally built those fields with their hands and now we're gonna charge, far up to your point, the batting cages, that was donated for the kids. So I'd hate to deter all these young kids from making it to those travel teams. I don't wanna, I don't bring this regular teams, I want this to be Sherman Area Softball. And I get, it, it is seventy-five bucks, that's all we charge, and to go up to a hundred or a hundred and thirty dollars, we're gonna lose a lot of kids and we, we want them excited about softball, we want them excited about our community and it's just gonna start turning kids away.
All right, thanks, Marsha. Next, uh, individual, Mr. Kadi?
I keep pretty short, um, I agree with Brett, I, I can charge him for pavilions and all that stuff, makes a lot of sense. Coached several teams in the, in softball out here, they're our parents, they have trouble paying, so if she's right, we'll lose some kids and I don't like CNN. I prefer, uh, local, non-competitive softball for my kids. Because we didn't have it this year, I had to take my daughter to competitive, it's a different experience, it's a lot more money, able to simply rule out any of the other kids that can get into it. I hope it doesn't go underground somewhere. I agree, these things cost money. From the outside, not hearing any of this information here tonight, if I were just in the public and I heard this was happening, I would say, gee, your local decided to build this nice big fancy park and now we're gonna get out of softball kids. Food for thought.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kadi. I didn't even start the timer yet. Uh, Mr. Horn?
I tell you what, you go and cut it in my sleep time.
Not your bath time?
Had a couple beers and ate and my recliner and sleep. So this is way past my bed.
No, I said, I wanna compliment the board, the village, and what you've done over the years, this park is a great park, I, you know, and I use it every day, you've done a great job there. And I think what he just said there too, I hate to see you start charging the fees for a park that's nowhere near on this park. And you take care of this park, I think you have to take care of both of them. Mainly over there, it's a mowing issue. There's no fences over there, it's not a big maintenance project over there. I look at the fees and, you know, hard to see, but it looks like we're nickel and diamond some people here and there have to be some by cells, if we ever raise two, three, four thousand dollars, there'll be some by cells we can cut. You know, a friend of mine that I know communicated with Trevor and said, his words were, I don't care what other communities are doing, he says, we're nickel and diamond, our own people and Sherman's better than that. And I think we are, kid.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Horn. Ms. Wald, Andy Wald?
Oh, sorry. Okay, on another topic. I'm here about my neighbor.
Okay.
I don't know if you knew that she, her license got renewed for another year for breeding. I've talked to a lot of different people and I've got sixty-three signatures from people already that have agreed that we need something done. I also, I looked on the village website and I found in covenants, in the old covenants that I found online, I found, um, in every one of them, there is something related to not being able to breed animals in your, on your residential property. And all these different covenants, all the way from my own subdivision from nineteen fifty-nine, all the way to the most current, at the point from two thousand and sixteen, they all have something in them about not being able to breed animals, you know, and having a, um, what was it, a reasonable number of animals on your property. They're all worded a little differently, but they all come around to the same thing. And so, um, in talking to neighbors about this and that, we kind of feel like if we can't enforce, um, covenants, covenant rules, that maybe the village needs to have something in ordinance rules about this issue. Now, I know you do have it in your zoning thing and I know that a letter has gone out to her about it, but I just found out tonight that she's been renewed for another year. When I looked on the same, when I looked on their website to see how many different breeders there are in San Antonio, there were four. One, only one in Sherman, the others were in New Berlin and Springfield and, uh, Auburn. Now, there are three listed on their website that are renewed for another year and there are two now listed in Sherman, the other one is on, uh, Farron Road, Suddeth Kennels, that one just pop, popped up this year that wasn't there last year, so.
That one wouldn't be in the village, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not. And it, and I looked on the website to see what the property is and, and it is out and is, you know, a larger property than the one right next door to me that's in a residential neighborhood. So anyway, I just wanted to, um, continue to express my concerns about this, she still doesn't clean up the feces, it smells awful in this heat and something needs to be done. It is, this shouldn't be allowed to happen in a residential neighborhood and the fact that the Department of Ag knows that you guys are having this issue and that you sent for this letter and they still renewed her for another year. So obviously, the Department of Ag is no help.
I talked to the Department of Ag lawyers prior to the renewal and they said, look, there are rules. They don't care.
Yeah, they don't.
About locals over. So they were, they, you know, they said, we're gonna renew her because we don't care about locals, I can't enforce your, enforce your own zoning ordinances, so we're doing that. According to the terms of the ordinances. We sent her a letter recently saying you gotta cease your breeding, it's under the code, you, under the zoning code, we've got a property use matrix that prohibits animal kennels in residential areas. So we sent her a notice saying you have to cease that activity, you will, we'll soon be able to enforce the zoning code. As to the subdivision, subdivision covenants, that's not up, the village doesn't enforce those, the homeowners association does.
Right.
So that's, that's a.
And it's very hard for them to, I mean, there, it's like, nothing, I mean, it's, they're like, rules are no good language, I'm pretty honest, I mean.
No, covenants is are strong.
Covenants are.
They're super strong, they're very enforceable.
We don't have to have a homeowners association that won't.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, the Supreme Court will hold up covenants all day long, it's just that you gotta get to that point and there is no homeowners association in that area. A lot of times what happens, uh, is after twenty-five years, is it?
Depends on the term.
Terms of the, the covenants is a lot of times they disband and go away, right? So, and then basically a city, town, villages, ordinances start to govern at that point. But no, covenants is are very strong, it's just that the village. But no, covenants are very strong, it's just that the village doesn't have standing in enforcing the covenants. It's either an individual citizen like yourself who could bring an action, or anybody else, or an actual homeowners association. They're the ones that have the actual standing when a complaint is filed in the circuit court. So, yeah.
Should we send a letter to her to cease and desist?
Yep.
And she's not?
No, the kennels are still there, and when they almost get to barking, it sounds like living next door to a kennel, or living next door to a vet's office, honestly, it's awful.
We gave her, we gave her a cease and desist, like going ahead and in front of me, I think it was July.
And here's a matter that even predates me, John, it's one of the homeowners that are having the same issue.
But what I don't get is, Department of Health, EPA, nobody will do anything. And the yard is honest to goodness, I mean, it's disgusting, I mean... So she is mowing now, because she's got a mower, but, you know, she doesn't pick up the feces, and it just, like, people come to our house and they're like, ooh, the smell. I'm like, no, no, we live like extra for like twenty-four hours.
Better than mowing.
Yeah, yeah. Even though...
All right, I saw Jake Hyder step out, so he had signed in maybe, but he had stepped out, so. Is there anybody I missed in the chamber that would like to address the board or that hasn't signed in?
Can I say something, help us?
So, I'm sorry?
Can I say something, help us?
Absolutely, yep.
I was just saying, you're saying, going back to the ball field, if I'm gonna play through the field, I mean, I expect them lined, the bases put out for me. I mean, I pay the spurt of the lodges, I pay twenty-five dollars for two hours, they're lined, lined in, the bases are out for me, put up for me, I just don't complain. Right now, when we have played there, we line them, we put the bases in and out, you know, we do all the sets. So there's fees associated, and that should be taken care of. As Lori said, we've got to maintain a team, so we can unload our parents, otherwise, all of us grow up the older. The schools, district shows that we've been successful doing this way, and we're gonna start taking our kids out of the house, so.
So Trevor, one thing I was just gonna say, I'm not trying to argue with the ladies, I coached softball fourteen years, I love it. But, excuse me, in reference to some of the fees, what we run into sometimes, you know, they say a tandem load every other year, and that, that park gets flooded. The currents take that...
That's why I said I wasn't sure what the real... That's just what the recommendation was. So I was thinking, maybe that can be a way to adjust costs, follow their recommendations.
We'll do it actually twice a year, put dirt on there, and like I said, all it takes is one huge rain, and usually diamond one's about the last one to get it. Two and three, but I know, like I said, there's fees, but I know we've done it numerous times, and it's like, crap, two weeks later, it's in Petersburg or something by now, our field, so.
I was just pointing out that what they recommended, thinking, you know, if we got this much cost and we need to have this much money, maybe there's a middle ground.
I agree totally, there.
Are there some types of committees that you guys are gonna be a part of to discuss that? I would love to know what it is, or who could be a part of it, or to get some of these community members that have been dealing with these fields for years. You know, I've been volunteering for Sherman softball for eight, nine years, and as a parent, a coach, and as a chairman, and a...
No, no, I was down there. So I mean, I'm out of it, but I know I coached teams down there, it was red ball. Love it, develop, develop your kids, and we decided to move on. You know, we moved on, but I think it's great for youth to learn how to play softball.
Yeah, I have two conversations, I have my older daughter who plays it, and I expect to pay for you, to Sarah's point, you pay that, but they're lying, they're... I believe for Ivy, she's eight. This is, we want to be in Sherman for her. So that's, I obviously have travel teams, two different conversations I'm talking about here.
Okay, so this was a healthy, good conversation. I don't think there's any further business coming with work, correct? All right. That being said, Ivy?
She will.
So I gotta, I gotta get a motion, so you're gonna do this, okay? If there's no further business, can you say it? You gotta say it loud, you gotta take, you gotta let everybody in the chamber hear it. If there's no further business... The chair... Would entertain a motion... To adjourn. Is there a motion? You want my uncle or trustee? Is it trustee Hawn or uncle Hawn? All right, you say uncle Brett makes a motion. And is there a second? Is there a second? Trustee Schultz. Second to motion. All in favor? Say aye. Are we none? We stand in your honor.